2017, I'd like to call the committee as a whole to order with committee members present this evening, myself, Michael Kishmerick, Counselor Angela Beazall, Counselor Amy Green, Counselor Dave Clark, Counselor Jim Caddy, Counselor Tom Donnelly, Counselor Marcus Dina Tally, Counselor Dean Tran, Counselor Jeff Bean, and Counselor Paul Boeschman. This evening, we have the following orders before us. 13517, Mayor's Fiscal Year 2018 Budget. General Fund, $118 million, $118,343,080. Airport, $683,411. Wastewater, $11,611,423. Water, $6,248,821. 13617 ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $700,000, same to be credited to fiscal year 2018 tax levying charged against overlay surplus. 13717 ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $200,620, same to be charged against parking meter, garage receipts, and credited to fiscal year 2018 accounts as follows. Treasury Personal Services, $87,620. Treasury Receipts, Treasury Expenses, rather, $115,000.
Mr. President, are you going to read through every one of these?
I don't have to, Counselors.
I would prefer if we waive the readings and just take them up and...
Will do.
Thank you.
Counselors, I'll read through the proposed recommendations that we have to date. I'll take this in the following order, so we'll read by group. I'll then invite each department to speak to the cut and then allow the counselor who proposed the cut to speak to that cut and then field questions or comments from Counselors. And then we'll take a vote for each cut before then approving the total orders at the end. Are there any objections to this process? All right, seeing none. We have the following proposed cuts. General Fund Revenue Taxation, 2.5 percent. This is proposed by Counselor Tran. The original amount of $1,240,58. Proposed Reduction of $48,803 by Counselor Tran. Proposed New Amount of $1,191,255. Counselors, as you know, this would necessitate cuts elsewhere in order to achieve this. It's not before the council to actually vote on a recommendation, on a cut to revenue, if I understand correctly, from the city auditor. Human Resources Training, original amount $4,000. Proposed Reduction $2,000 by Counselor Tran. Proposed New Amount $2,000. Assessor Office Supplies, original amount $7,000. Proposed Cut $2,000 by Counselor Tran. Proposed New Amount $5,000. Travel In State by the Assessor again. Original Amount $3,600. Proposed Reduction of $1,000 by Counselor Tran. New Amount $2,600.
Mr. President, can we just take these up one by one and just...
We can. I would ask then if there's any cuts that have been omitted from this list before we then move forward. Counselors, are there any omissions from this list? Seeing none, we'll then move forward with the cuts on this. Before us now is Human Resources Training. Again, Counselor said it'll be Page 9. Original Amount $4,000. Proposed Reduction of $2,000 by Counselor Tran. Proposed New Amount of $2,000. Mayor, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Wilson.
Mr. President, I want to point out that Ms. Davis is informally acting as a Director of HR right now with the recent retirement of the former HR Director. So these numbers actually were from the former Director, but Ms. Davis is more than capable of defending those cut, retaining that revenue. Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this. As a human resources professional, I'm definitely a huge proponent and advocate of training for several reasons. One is which it's going to offer our employees the opportunity for professional growth and development, which in turn is going to serve the city better, which will in turn serve our constituents better. I think that the training certainly lends itself to that practice of trying to elevate our departments and our employees certainly to their best practices. Secondly, the training that we've had so far, insofar as the numbers that are here, I believe that Bernie had put in the increased revenue because we do have some increased training activity. So far this year, which I know several of the Counselors here attended some of this training, we've had delivering performance appraisals, riding the wave of workforce uncertainty and change, managing challenging employee situations, best practices for facilitating meetings, which certainly saves time and money and more effective management of our resources. The training that we do have scheduled to be coming up will be Management 101, which will serve our new managers in some of those areas and needs. And then for our employees, we will have customer service skills, which again, which is going to help better our employees as well as serving our constituents better. And certainly, one item that we haven't had any training in, which I'd like to address, which is social media in the workplace. These trainings, as we have them, we send all of the attendance lists to MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, and they do grant us reductions in our overall insurance premiums. So a lot of the classes that, some of that we've had, as well as we will schedule, will help to offset that, which is overall city-wise in the thousands of dollars. So we can help to offset that. And the third reason, we are contractually obligated by six of the unions to hold annual or training on an annual basis. While it doesn't specify what areas, we are contractually obligated to provide that training.
Counselor Tran, this was your cut. Do you wish to...
Sure, Mr. President. First of all, just keep in mind that we just realized over $4.7 million in free cash from the last budget season. So there's money in the budget. Every year, we go through this, whether Counselor Dina Tally or myself make small proposals and reductions, we always get pushback. If you look at the general expense budget reports for the last four years, the spending for this particular line item for this department hasn't exceeded $1,500. And for the next fiscal year, we're appropriating $4,000. So I'm asking for a... The reduction I'm making, it's not a cut. It's a reduction to the increases that the mayor is putting in this budget for this department. $2,000 is going to go back into the general fund. And if the department is going to exceed the $1,500 amount that they spent, which is the maximum for the last three years in their department, they can come back and ask the mayor for additional funding. But I'd rather, you know, if the reports show that the department's not spending it, I'd rather have that in the general fund and use it for something else.
Questions from Counselors. Counselor Green.
My question would be, how much, in the trainings that you've offered so far, how much has that cost the city to do those trainings?
Each event is approximately $420. The training itself, in terms of the instructors, that, there's no charge. It's actually through, again, through MIA, through the Employee Assistance Program. Since we did schedule the training for a five-hour span, we did supply lunch and coffee, sandwiches and coffee for breakfast, some of the, you know, the cost of duplicating PowerPoints, those kinds of things.
Again, looking back over the years, in this particular department, offering training has been lax, to say the least. So I, you know, are we going to be able to still offer the training that's needed that we're contractually obligated to do for $2,000?
No, honestly, no. I think that there are a number of policies and procedures that I think that need to be set in a formal training environment. And some of those items may not have been more fully covered, maybe, as they might have been. MIA, you know, consistently develops new, you know, develops new training programs. And so I think that, you know, it behooves us to take advantage of that. Again, I think that, you know, the training certainly, even just for something like a customer service class, I think that we want all levels of employees to be able to interact with our constituents as well as their internal customers. All my customers are all internal. They're all the city folks. So I think that, you know, whether it's building a respectful relationship, a conflict resolution, I think that some of those courses now or seminars have been developed. And, you know, over time, they will continually develop more. I think that it would definitely be advantageous for employees to do that. And again, certainly, we, in the interest of, you know, the costs that were associated with that, we did put five topics into, you know, one or two training classes, which, you know, Counselor Green, you had attended. So I do believe that, you know, we certainly need to help educate, you know, our employees. And again, it's going to serve our constituents well.
Would this be part of our moving forward? Would you like to see this as part of the city's best practice or, you know, as part of the program for how we're operating?
My number-one goal is to bring the city of Pittsburgh and its employees as a leader in the forefront of best practices in municipalities.
Thank you.
Counselor Boeschman.
Could you explain to me what kind of training you have so far for all the employees, even the laborers that are out there in the field? Do you have anything like sexual harassment training?
Yep.
Workplace violence training already? Do you ever had all these trainings?
We have not. Those are scheduled for employees.
Why not? How come they didn't have them before? You have any reasons why they weren't done before, prior?
That, you know what, honestly, that is something that I think every municipality may handle differently. Coming from the private sector, we were required to have sexual harassment training every year, and we will going forward, having, have that here. So it's going to be, it will, it's coming up. It's scheduled. We also have some for the DPW. We have for all managers alcohol and drug awareness, because that's certainly, especially with the opiate crisis, is something that we need to be able to recognize on all level of employees regardless.
What about workplace violence?
I have not scheduled that. What we did was to take the classes that MIA offers, and I want employees to be engaged. You're going to pay attention to something that you know you're going to benefit from. So we sent out a course selection. All of the department heads and managers, you know, were allowed to rank them in order that we, you know, that they wanted to see them occur. However, something like workplace violence will be put together with the sexual harassment training.
All right. Counselor Dina Tally.
This is a general comment on the meeting tonight. I don't want to sound as if I don't want to be transparent or educate the public on the ins and outs of these departments. We're talking about finances tonight. And one of the things about these hearings that's always irked me is how we get into the weeds on these department line items, right down to the situation of types of training we offer. These are management decisions. These are personnel matters. The question is, can the HR Director or Acting HR Director provide the level of training that she would like to provide if this were cut? And the answer is obviously no. For me personally, not speaking for anyone else, it's irrelevant to me what the training she wants to provide is, as long as it's within the confines of human resource policy. With that said, this is my 10th budget, and I believe where Counselor Tran is going with his cuts is a noble effort. I've done it, God knows, every year, and far more substantial than this. But what always, I don't know if annoyed is the right word. Whatever, what always annoyed me about these meetings is, we put a cut on the table, and then the department head's going to sit there, and what do you guys think the department head's going to say? Cut it? I think there's only one department head in my 10 years, I believe it was the city clerk, and that was because she knew with absolute certainty it wasn't going to be necessary because she found that out after the budget was submitted. Other than that, I've never had a department head tell us to cut their budget, ever. They're not going to say, "Do it." So, you know, I'm not saying their testimony for me is irrelevant. I already know what they're going to say. They're going to tell us every single way possible, "Don't do it." Period. I mean, I appreciate them being able to explain it. I'm glad if they want to. I'm not trying to stifle discussion. It's just 10 years in a row with this. No one's going to say, "Do it." They're going to tell us every which way why they should have that money, and if we don't give them that money, oh, hell's going to break loose when we know it isn't. All right? So not to defend so much the severity of the cut, because it's miniscule in comparison to everything else, obviously. Counselor Tran's one point was accurate in terms of, these aren't cuts. This isn't a cut. This is a reduction in the increase. If this cut were to go through, the budget is still increased by 33 percent, because you've got to base it on the baseline last year. But government likes to work in this way. I want $15 this year. I got $10 last year. If I don't get my 15, you give me 12. I got cut $3. No, you didn't. You got increased by 2. So that's my spiel for this entire list. If you look at all the cuts Counselor Tran has proposed, $75,000, it's .00064 percent of the budget. And I have a hankering that we're not going to approve these cuts. How do I know that from years of experience with my own cuts? Because if we cut .00064 percent of the budget, either in these areas or in other areas, well, that's it. Everybody should just go home now because the city's no longer going to function. These meetings really rub me, rub me in the wrong direction because as a financial analyst and budgetary analyst in the private sector for 13 years, if you go before department heads and say .00064 percent of a cut, they'll laugh and go, "That's all you're going to cut me?" Beautiful. Here, it's like showing Dracula the cross. So, so we're going to go through each one of these things. I guess I'm speaking this way because I'm just fatigued at this point after 10 years of trying. We're going to go through this list, and we're going to get every sob story of why it can't happen.
Counselor Dina Tally. Do you have a, do you have a point?
I have no question for the human resources, Acting Human Resources, because I know what she's going to say. She's going to say, "Don't do it." Just like the next 10 or 15 department heads, "Don't do it. The world will end." Thank you.
Well, Counselors, I will, before returning to the speakers list, I will echo the sentiments of Counselor Dina Tally. The point of giving us a month to this point and reorganizing this way was for those of you with interest of the intimate, you know, workings of each department, so that you could contact those department heads, really ask questions, dig into the, you know, the types of trainings that are provided, and really ask or even advise wherever you see fit. Leading up to this moment, my hope here is that we can keep this high level and what is the impact of the cut. So that said, Counselor Bean.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I'm a strong believer in making sure we have an educated and trained workforce and providing professional, professional development for our employees, especially the ones that are, that are dealing with the public each and every day. So I don't have a problem with the increase. I think, I think it's been a low number to begin with, and we should have been doing more training. So I just see it as a, as a right thing to do, and I think it's going to benefit the citizens of Pittsburgh. So I'm a, I would vote against the cut and support the amount requested. I think it's a penny wise, pound foolish to make those cuts.
Counselor Donnelly.
Well, I agree with what Counselor Dina Tally said. I'm not a financial analyst, but, you know, I also, this is my 10th budget, but I believe in education. I believe in training. In most of them, I think, we would think that the training was within the department. But this one here is throughout City Hall or throughout all the employees. So I think the increase is well-deserved. I'd support it.
Mr. President, just very quickly, I just want to make it clear that I am not, I am not debating the merits of the increase and whether they're justified or not. I'm sure they are. My point was a general point, whether you agree with them or not, there is no department head who's going to tell us to do this. That's all I wanted to say. Whether you agree with them or not, that's all. I'm not saying that they're not valid or they're not noteworthy, because God knows we haven't done good things in this city for a while. So it was a general comment about how these processes have always worked. That's all. And that's why I thought it was best to speak and say, let's stick to the matter. $4,000 budget. Counselor Tran wants to cut it by $2,000. Can you do what you wanted to do with the $2,000 instead? Answer no. And what do you want to do with the increase? That's it. I mean, we don't have to get into all the different types of training. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. That said, I'd ask for a motion in the affirmative this evening for all of, for all of the proposed cuts as we vote on them. The matter is before you.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Wait a second.
Approve it.
I'm asking for, I'm asking for a motion in the affirmative and then a vote on each individual cut.
I'm just trying to get it on the floor.
Absolutely.
You're supposed to get it on the floor in a positive, so you know when you're done if you're going to vote yes or no.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve a cut in the amount of, a proposed reduction in the amount of $2,000 for a proposed new amount of $2,000. Although, speaking to the motion, Counselor Tran.
For a point of clarity, no one is against training. We all appreciate the training that we get, whether it's in the public or private sector. This is about basing on historical spending, and my reduction is based on that. That's all it is. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to approve. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Two in favor, all those opposed. Opposition, motion fails. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
City Assessor, there are two proposed reductions this evening. The first, both of these are on Page 11, Counselors. Office Supplies, original amount $7,000. Proposed Reduction of $2,000 by Counselor Tran and proposed new amount of $5,000. The second proposed reduction is to travel in state. Original Amount $3,600. Reduction of $1,000 by Counselor Tran. Proposed New Amount of $2,600. Mr. Wilson.
I'd like to just start with a general comment. You know, these budgets aren't just thrown together. There's a lot of work that goes into these. And I just, what I want to say is that it's not always simply a matter of looking at what you spent for the last three years, taking a simple average, and then saying, "Well, they didn't spend it, they don't need it." And I'll give you a perfect example of that. Let's say I print my deeds every year, and it costs me $1,000 to print the deed book every year. And in one given year, that gets pushed off to the following year, right? It doesn't mean I don't have to still print that deed book. What it really means is I have to spend twice as much money the next year. So it's not, you know, when you look at numbers, it's easy to look at the numbers in a vacuum. But when you're left with not enough money to do what needs to be done, then you have to make hard decisions. So that being said, I'd like to tell Counselor Dina Tally that, you know, you're cutting, Counselor Tran wants to cut my office supplies by $2,000, and that's fine. So this is the first time it's ever happened, or the second time. But the second, the second item...
Am I awake?
The second item, travel in state, it's a little misleading what that really is. It's not as if, you know, I'm hopping in a car and driving, you know, to the beach every weekend, okay? This is the money that we get to use our own vehicles to go out and assess property. So unlike many of the departments, I use my own vehicle, and my staff uses their own vehicle. And we get a small stipend every day we roll our cars. So if you go to a cut to $2,600, which Counselor Tran has proposed, well, I've already basically spent that much up to the second week of May. This is the time of year when we're out there every day trying to get new growth, which you see in coming in, in income. This year, it gave us an extra $600,000 to spend. So the worst-case scenario is you cut my budget to a number, and May rolls around, and I can't even move my car to pick up the growth we're using to spend extra in the budget. So that one, like I said, I'll live with the office supplies and I'll make it work. But the second one makes no sense at all.
Counselor Tran, this was your cut. Would you like to speak to this?
Again, Mr. President, it's just based on the historical spending from the department. And, Mr. Wilson, I understand where you're coming from. I hear you loud and clear on the second part of the cut. I do maintain my stance on the office supplies because that never exceeded $5,000, we're increasing it by $7,000. But the travel in state, I would, I would rescind that proposal.
I appreciate that, Counselor.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I was going to say that I'm, I actually wasn't going to support the office supply cut because...
Checkmate, right? Testicle.
From where I, from where I sit, I don't disagree with a word you said, Mr. Assessor. What I, I don't use historical average, because there's an up and there's a down. And there might be instances where one year, there was unforeseen things that normally don't happen, that happened, that drive the number up, and vice versa. So I don't just simply use historical averages. I also look at, besides historical averages, you also have to look at the up and the down, the high and the low. And I know Counselor Tran said that this account never exceeded $5,000, but with all due respect to him looking at the statuses, that's incorrect. The office supply account in FY14 spent $6,700, and FY, I'm sorry, in FY12, it spent $6,700, and FY11, $6,600, and in FY14, $5,500. So it, it's been close to that 700 number, 7,000 number, in the, the high and the low. So that's why I wasn't going to support it, because there have been a couple of fiscal years you came just pretty, pretty close to that number. So that, that's why I wouldn't have supported that. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
I just want to make a motion that we cut the office supplies by $2,000.
Second. I have a motion and second to, to cut office supplies in the amount of $2,000 for a new proposed amount of $5,000. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor of the cut? Please raise your hand. Aye. All those opposed? Sorry.
You were in favor also.
I was in favor.
So it was three in favor?
And...
Three to seven.
Three to seven. Motion fails. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
That was a no?
It was a no, correct. Was it in favor of the cut? Yeah, it was a no.
Okay. Clarification on that? So the vote was to cut the 2,000?
Correct.
And it, what was the count of the vote?
There was three in favor of the cut and seven opposed.
Only three? I think you should move.
So, all right, Counselors, for clarification, all those in favor of the cut?
In favor of the proposal.
In favor of the proposed cut.
Your hands up, please. Jeff Bean, Dean Tran.
Five. Five in the affirmative. All those opposed?
You.
Five in the negative.
So it's five to five.
Motion, five to five.
It fails.
Counselor Bean, thank you for that clarification. Unfortunately, the, it still fails. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next, information, technology, training, travel and training. That's on Page 13, Counselors. Original Amount $4,000. Proposed Reduction of $1,000 by Counselor Tran. A new proposed amount of $3,000. Mr. Benio, good evening.
Hi. I just wanted to let you guys know that this line item was 4,000. It was cut last year to 2,000. I believe that I spent around $3,200 in FY16 on this account, and it's, basically, I try to use this money to train other members, other departments, and other users of technology. Also, technology changes very quickly, and we really need to try to keep up with that technology. There's only two and a half of us in the department, so I would ask to bring that number back to 4,000.
Counselor Tran, this is your cut. Would you like to speak to it? You can wave me off. You have several of these this evening.
I'll move to accept the proposal.
Second.
A motion and second to approve... Counselor Tran, this is your cut. Would you like to speak to it? You can wave me off. You have several of these this evening.
I'll move to accept the proposal.
Second.
A motion and second to approve, to accept the proposed reduction of $1,000 to a new amount of $3,000 for travel and training in IT. All those in favor? Three in the affirmative. All those opposed?
Seven. Three to seven.
Three to seven. Motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beanio. Tax collection and treasury. Ms. Cervantes? Sorry for the delay there. I almost said Mr. Brooks. Old habits.
Yes.
There is one proposed reduction this evening to office supplies on page 16, councilors. Original amount, $10,000, proposed reduction of $1,000 by Counselor Tran to a new amount of $9,000.
Well, the first thing that I'd like to say is that this year's request is already a reduction from last year by $5,000. Last year's request was $15,000, or last year's budget. I'm projecting we're going to spend about $8,500 in that line item this year. I'd like to keep the requested amount at 10,000, just so we have a little bit of a buffer in case there's something unforeseen coming up in the next year.
Counselor Tran, this is your cut.
To adopt the reduction?
Second.
A motion and second to adopt the reduction. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Deanna Tally.
Just on this, going back historically, this account has spent at or above $85,000 in four of the last eight fiscal years. So there have been years we have gone over. And I think in these instance, in this specific instance, going over doesn't necessarily negate, mean it's a bad thing. It means we have processed more tax title proceedings, or some of them are more complicated.
Well, this is office supplies.
I'm sorry, we're talking about office supplies right now.
$8,500. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the tax. I'm sorry. My apologies. Never mind. Sorry.
I have a motion and second. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? One in the affirmative, all the...sorry, two in the affirmative. All those opposed?
Two to eight.
Eight in the negative. Motion fails. Tax title, tax title foreclosure, also on page 16, councilors. Original amount, $100,000, proposed reduction of $15,000 by Counselor Tran, a new proposed amount of $85,000. Counselor Deanna Tally.
So, now we're here. The tax title foreclosure, I know we've been ramping that up in the last year or two. This is one of those accounts, like veterans' benefits, right? I'm not encouraging overspending, but it's not as if we're not, that money's not being wisely used in this purpose, because we're seizing properties that are abandoned, or not, we're not getting the revenue for, and we're hoping to repurp, to get them through land court, and then put them back on the tax rolls through a resale or what have you. So I think by increasing this account, we're ramping up those efforts to take some of these abandoned properties and get them back on the tax rolls. So it's, to me, it's money well spent if it's been going up a little bit. And as I said earlier, that four or five of the last eight years, we've been near or at or above 85. So that's why I don't wish to vote to support this specific cut. I actually hope we utilize the $100,000 to the fullest potential and get as many properties as we can back onto the tax rolls through land court. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Ms. Cervantes, would you like to speak to this? Is there anything else you'd like to add to this particular item?
Counselor Deanna Tally did a fine job for me. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
I've just been observing the negligence by the city over the years by not putting money into this account. And if you drive around in some of the worst neighborhoods, many of those pieces of property, some are vacant, there's no building on them, and the former owner owns it, but nobody controls it. And we have to, we have to get them to land court in order to sell them to neighbors, or sell them for redevelopment, or sell them to the side yard properties. But the city has been negligent for many, 20, 30 years, been negligent in not putting the money on. It's the only way. You're not always going to recoup your money, but it's going to belong to somebody that will get on the tax roll, and somebody will be responsible. So I do not support the cut.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I want to point out the fact that the former treasurer, Calvin Brooks, just did an outstanding job, as Counselor Deanna Tally mentioned, in bringing properties back, back on the tax rolls, or moving forward to attack the blight in the city and move to have those incorporated into our demolition process. So I know Treasurer Cervantes is equally adept at this approach, and we're hoping for more properties back on the tax rolls, or fall victim to the wrecking ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve the cut.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the reduction of $15,000 for a new proposed amount of $85,000. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative. All those opposed?
Three to seven.
Seven in the negative. Three to seven, the motion fails. And debt service, maturing debt, also page 17, councilors. Original amount of $3,940,000, proposed reduction of $20,000 by Counselor Tran to a new proposed amount of $3,920,000. I'll also read short-term debt interest, page 17. Original amount, $30,000, proposed reduction of $10,000 by Counselor Tran, and proposed new amount of $20,000. Ms. Cervantes.
Neither one of these line items can be reduced. These are the actual amounts that the city will be obliged to pay in the coming fiscal year for these two things, the maturing debt and for the short-term debt interest.
Counselor Tran.
I had a discussion with Treasurer Calvin Brooks on these, on, I think, at least the maturing debt.
Yes.
Those are hard numbers that can be reduced. So I would rescind those proposals.
I just have one question for my own justification. I would assume that, that makes sense to me, because they're existing interest payments on loans we already have. So there should be a schedule already telling us what our payment is. With that said, my only question is, there have been some periods, there have been some fiscal years where we did not spend what we budgeted, and I'm just curious to know why that would be. For example, the short-term debt interest in fiscal year 16, let's say, it was $30,000, well, $10,000, we spent 9670. I just don't, is, does any, I just, it's just for informational, would there be a reason why we wouldn't spend what the assessment is?
Yes. Part of it is when we do the budget, we create the budget in January, February, March, we haven't done the actual borrowing, which is done in June. And so June, we then know for sure what it is. The other part of it is, normally, we use, there's some extra, there's a cushion within that figure, so that if we have to do any short-term borrowing in the course of the year, we have the funds available. In the past, the city has had to do revenue anticipation notes, just to handle cash flow.
I would assume long-term debt interest applies as well in that case.
Long-term debt and, both the maturing debt and the long-term interest are known amounts.
Okay.
Or pretty much, I guess maybe first year on a new bond issue, maybe not, but generally, they go to a schedule.
Makes sense. Thank you.
If the, since the proposed reduction was rescinded, unless there's a further motion, we'll then move to police. Seeing none. So police, we have one proposed reduction this evening, office supplies. This is page 21. Original amount of $20,000, proposed reduction of $2,000 by Counselor Tran to a new proposed amount of $18,000. Chief Martin.
Thank you, councilors. Once again, to speak on this topic, I could easily absorb a $2,000 cut, but I wanted an opportunity to at least clarify what I did in my budget this year. Previous years, I've had $17,000 in my office supplies, and I had $3,000 in my photography account. In that photography account, we used to use that to pay, like JR Photos, when we used the old-style cameras. What we do now, it's all digital photography, so we're taking ink out of the office supplies for all our printing needs. So all we did this year was, I zeroed out my photography budget, and I took that $3,000 to keep it clean into the office supply. So it was just a wash from photography to office supplies. So that's why you saw the $3,000 increase.
Counselor Tran, this is your proposed reduction.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Matter of fact, I was going to make a motion to rescind this proposal. Actually, I'm going to expand that motion and make a motion to rescind all my proposals. Because God knows what I'm trying to do, help out the city and help out the mayor with his budget, but ultimately, it's his budget, and he's going to be responsible for the outcome of the budget. So that's my motion.
So I have a motion and second to rescind all of Counselor Tran's proposed cuts. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Beazel.
Thank you. For the past four years, I've been on the council, and we've looked at these budgets, and I can understand Counselor Tran and his efforts that he's trying to make. I guess my frustration with this is, this is $118 million, $343,000 budget, and every year, we end up with free cash of three or four million. So eventually, somebody's going to say, look, we're going to come in within this amount plus or minus. Anybody in this room, if you can spend $118 million, $343,000, and run this city, and come out with these numbers as close as they are, it's impossible to do. And that's, I guess, I applaud Counselor Dean for his effort in doing this, but I also struggle every year with the fact that the, our budget's $118 million, and, you know, I personally just think that when we look at these figures years to come, we need to have some kind of a plus or minus, what the city's going to end up with at the end of the year. Because I know that from a lot of people in the city, they look forward to these herrings. I would rather see herrings based off of departments talking about their departments, rather than talking about their finances, and what each department is doing in the city, rather than talking about some of these proposed cuts. That's just a suggestion that maybe later on in the year, we can hold a meeting where department heads have the right to come before us and just talk about their departments. But, I mean, absolutely, I applaud, you know, the cuts that were made. I see the philosophy behind it. If you spend this much this year, unless you can tell me that it's going to increase or decrease, how, I get all that. But it's just, to me, the budget's $118 million, and every year, we're left with three or four million dollars over. So it seems like we're hitting the budget that we're supposed to hit. Thank you.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
I agree, Counselor. I agree with the counsel to my left's philosophy. It's one I've had for 10 years. My disagreement maybe with him in some cases is the severity of the cut, or the size of the cut. I have maintained for a decade, this budget's not in balance. It's never been in balance. And if you want an exact change to fiscal discipline, you've got to make sizable cuts. Then, of course, the retort is, where do you want to cut, Counselor? 92% of this budget is tied up with employee benefits, police fire DPW, debt service, schools, and trash service, to name a few. There's roughly 7% or 8% of this budget that's mostly tied to administrative services, and then human services. And then you ask the resident, okay, of that 8%, what do you want to cut? Want to cut the library? Want to cut the senior center? Veterans? Recreation? City clerk? You know, essential services in the offices? So I agree with the philosophy. It's a philosophy I've had for years. There are significant problems with this foundation of this budget. One message sent to me every year is, well, that's just how we've done things. While if people have short-term memories, don't have short-term memories, they know that the way we've done things led to our almost demise 10 years ago. Because municipalities are not good at thinking ahead. Their only concern with this year. So I guess where I am, I sympathize with my colleague to my left. I've been beaten down like a dog with these cuts. Every year, I propose them. Every year, they don't get passed, or most don't get passed. And my cuts have always been to get us back to balance. Because I still maintain that if we keep using overlay surplus funds, there will be a time we won't have that money, and then we're going to be in big trouble. But no one wants to think about that, because it hasn't happened yet. So I get the argument that if we cut because there's excess, we'll leave it alone, it'll just become free cash next year. I get all that. It's about transparency. It's about better fiscal discipline. And I want to say that in the city's defense, it's gotten a lot better in the last 10 years. Because when I first came on the council, there were departments that were getting budgets astronomically in excess of what they have typically spent. And then the mayor at the time, or the mayors at the time, will pat themselves on the back when they get free cash certified. To me, I don't like working that way. I like to be honest with the public. Don't tell the public you're going to spend $10 because you're going to make revenue of $10. Be honest. Tell them you're going to spend $7. And that extra $3, you create a secondary reserve account in these budgets. I don't know why we don't do this. The prior mayor did it for snow and ice. She created a snow and ice reserve fund tied to snow and ice. I've always said, either reduce the overlay surplus, or whatever you cut, put it into a small account in the budget called Reserve for Other Municipal Purposes. That way, I can tell the taxpayer, we're going to collect $118 million, but we're only going to spend 115 of that. Okay? But again, that's frowned upon by the powers that be. So there has been an underpinning in this city for 40 years on how we do finances. It's not the right way to do finances. It's why in 15 years, this city will be bankrupt unless the state throws us a lifeline. So, but again, no one thinks beyond this here. So I get what you're saying. I get what he's saying. It's difficult, but I've given up at certain points. I have asked privatized services.
Do you have a point, Jermaine, to the motion on the floor?
The motion to rescind, I agree with the motion to rescind, because I feel like the guy to my, the colleague to my left is spinning his wheels unnecessarily. Because if we can't cut $75,000 from this budget, and I couldn't cut $500,000 or $600,000 from it, what can we cut? I say we just make a motion now, pass this budget in the next 15. Because every time someone even thinks of making a cut request, it gets derision thrown at you. It's just unbelievable. So that's all. I mean, I've, I will speak more on this budget and my feelings on it when we take a final vote, but I sympathize with my colleague to my left, and I don't blame him for making this motion. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to rescind the remainder of Counselor Tran's cuts from police fire, community development, board of health, recreation, and miscellaneous. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Lean opposition is unanimous. Other revenues, sorry, employee benefits, health insurance, page 41. Original amount, $14,640,000, proposed reduction of $100,000 by Counselor Deanna Tally to a proposed new amount of $14,540,000.
Mr. President, I'm going to recommend this be rescinded too, because I failed to remember, when I made this request, that most years, in the last 10 years, we have been relatively under this account in spending. I think it was last fiscal year, we got surprised, there was an assessment, an increase above what we budgeted, and if you recall, last year, we did approve my recommendation to cut $250,000, and then we ended up having to put it back in. That was one time out of eight years. So the odds are still, I think, in my favor, but because of last year, I'm a little gun-shine now to proceed with this. Unfortunately for myself, I didn't think of that when I made this request.
Second motion.
No motion necessary unless there's a counsel wishing to speak to or vote for it. All right, seeing none. Other revenue sources, overlay surplus on page 5. Original amount, $700,000, proposed reduction of $100,000 by Counselor Deanna Tally, and proposed new amount of $600,000. Again, councilors, this is a revenue source which would...
That was a suggestion, if the health insurance went through.
Understood. Are you rescinding this?
Yes, yes, yep.
So, Counselors, unless you wish to speak to this matter, we'll be speaking to the matter. Counselor Beazall.
This is one I was actually gonna vote for. The reason why is because, um, when you look at the overlay surplus, we say every year, we're putting in a seven hundred thousand away. Every year, it, and we're using this supposed revenue to, to balance the budget. It really doesn't make any sense. And I think if the most we ever spend out of this is three hundred thousand, and I know that someone's gonna tell me, "Well, the state allows it," which is great, the state allows it, but the reality is, if we can get closer to what the reality really is with this line, it makes the budget closer to what reality should be. That, that's just my philosophy on it.
Counselor Deena Tally, before I recognize you, I'd like to give the city auditor a chance to just speak to this.
If I could just comment, two, two things. One is that it's a revenue, would be a revenue cut, which means you'd have to first cut an equivalent amount of expenses in order to keep the, the budget within balance. It, secondly, I think this is the discussion we had with the mayor and with the finance team, that it, that it is something we want to address in the budget. We had tried to address it in this budget by, by lowering it by fifty thousand and ran into the, the storm, the stormwater storm that sucked up about three hun, what was it? Close to four hundred thousand dollars. And, and that forced us to scramble and not do quite as many things in terms of structural repairs to the budget that we wanted, had wanted to do. I do think this is something that going forward, we would, I would intend to address. First off, by trying to open up the, the spread between the nine hundred and fifty thousand that we have as an overlay and the seven hundred thousand that we're using as surplus toward the budget. The two fifty that we're netting out is what we know we are spending each year on exemptions. We need to build in a cush, a little more in there, and then we can, we're in a better place with the budget.
Okay. I mean, personally, if you're saying that moving forward, this line item's gonna be addressed, I guess I'm fine with that. It's just every year, when I look at that line at the end of the year, I just say, it's, for accounting purposes, I'd rather see it closer to what we actually do, more than just say, "We're doing it because this is what we're allowed to do." So, um, thank you for your efforts, and hopefully, in the future, we do see it come down, so.
Counselor Beazall, just a point of clarification. Are you asking for a vote on this matter?
I'm, I'm actually following Counselor Deena Tally's suggestion.
Counselor Deena Tally.
I rescinded it because as Auditor Brooks said correctly, you have to have a corresponding cut in order to do this. And if we can't even cut a thousand dollars from certain budgets, I don't expect us to cut a hundred thousand. I appreciate the acknowledgement, but I've heard it before. Not from him, from his predecessor, and from his predecessor. For nine years, nothing changed. So, I'll believe it when I see it. Thank you.
As it's been rescinded, we'll now move to, to wastewater. We have the following on page forty-six, Counselors. Sledge disposal, forty-six, uh, sorry, sledge disposal, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Proposed reduction of forty thousand dollars by Counselor Deena Tally for a new proposed amount of two hundred thousand. Magnesium hydroxide, page forty-six, again, one hundred and eighty thousand is the original amount. Proposed reduction of thirty thousand dollars by Counselor Deena Tally and a new proposed amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Architectural and engineering, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the original amount. Proposed reduction of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars by Counselor Deena Tally to a new proposed amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Mr. Morosky.
Thank you. Counselors, for wastewater treatment, a lot of the budget, whether it's chemicals or sludge production, sludge is, of course, a byproduct of treatment and it's something that has to be managed and disposed of. It's very variable depending on the amount of flow that comes to the treatment plant. And the previous two, or the previous fiscal year and the, the last fiscal year, but sixteen and seventeen, they both crossed over a drought year. The calendar year, twenty sixteen, was a drought year. So, we experienced lower flows at the tail end of sixteen and lower flows at the beginning of seventeen. Now, we're at the tail end of seventeen, and then we've had very, very wet springs. So, costs, associated costs with sludge, chemicals and so forth, would pick back up again. When we do budget for these types of things, we don't budget for drought years, of course. We would budget for an average, an average anticipated flow year. And for these two particular, or I should say, the first two line cuts proposed, sludge and magnesium hydroxide, these are both multi-year contracts that we put out through procurement. For ash, in, it's a misnomer to call it ash. That's a, a holdover from the days when we had an incinerator. Currently, we're de-watering sludge and we're disposing of that sludge at the Fitchburg Westminster landfill. That, those contracts, that contract for ash, sludge disposal, is gonna go up three percent on the, the cost for disposal in the upcoming year. And for magnesium hydroxide, that cost will go up two percent for costs. Now, we had said earlier in the, the budget hearings that we could potentially pursue a supplemental appropriation, and we can do just that as well for both the sludge account line and as well as the chemical account line for magnesium hydroxide. The only dilemma that we have is that we can't fully expend that budget. We have to monitor the, the expense spending of that and make a, in appropriately timed budget, supplemental budget appropriation. So, we, we could agree to these two cuts. I can't say that they're gonna be the real numbers or not the real numbers. Concerning the, the third line, this will be the, the second time tonight that Counselor Deena Tally has agreed with. But, this particular line account was a brand-new created account in the fiscal sixteen year, where myself and the then-city auditor, Dick Saracen, we created this account for engineering services that we would need to expend within a, a given fiscal year out of the operating budget. So, it's, it's very variable in its nature, depending on what the needs are. When we were preparing the seventeen budget, the fiscal seventeen budget, as we said earlier, that budget gets prepared in January, February, March. And as we progressed closer to the end of the fiscal sixteen budget year, we saw that we had capacity within the fiscal sixteen budget to pay for some of the planned services that were built into the seventeen budget. So, we ended up encumbering funds across from sixteen to seventeen to accommodate that. And that resulted in the fiscal seventeen budget being overfunded. So, we could absorb Counselor Deena Tally's proposed cut, provided that we could encumber across unexpended funds necessary to fund the, the services for fiscal eighteen.
Counselor Deena Tally, the following were your cuts.
I, I propose them to start a discussion on this. I feel as if the enterprise funds for, I don't know how long, get a free pass. Maybe the people in charge of those funds disagree, but I feel they get a free pass 'cause they're quote-unquote self-sustaining. So, what I've always said in the past is, "Well, why don't we look at these accounts more closely and make cuts?" And I've always had people push back and say, "Well, they're, they're self-sufficient. Their revenues match their expenses." Well, whoop-de-doo. I mean, so what? I mean, so if they're gonna collect more revenue, we're gonna spend more money. There, these accounts have retainage accounts. They have reserve accounts. I know Mr. Delaine talks about retained earnings all the time, and how the water department before him went through it pretty, pretty profusely. So, my point in these cuts is to say to Mr. Morosky and, and the mayor and, and Mr. Laxo is, I look at this year's budget, it's eleven million, four hundred and forty-four thousand. This proposal says eleven million, six hundred and eleven thousand for an increase of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three ninety-eight. So, my cuts total that exact increase, because I'm sitting at my home and I'm going myself, the residents of Fitchburg are getting taken to the woodshed on their water, their sewer portion of their bill because of some geniuses in DC. And we know this department's gonna have rate increases as far as we can think right now to pay for those unfunded mandates. Considering what's going on right now, I don't think it's prudent on our part to allow a budget to be increased by a mere a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, instead of possibly just keeping it level funded as last year. So, that's all I'm really going with these cuts. They don't necessarily have to be in these three accounts. That's what caught my eye. But, that was my methodology, is for such a small value compared to the entire budget, I find it hard to believe that wastewater can't do without a hundred and sixty-seven thousand out of eleven and a half million dollars. And it's maybe a little bit of a gesture to the ratepayers to say, "We recognize the pain you're in. Maybe it's not prudent on the city's part to raise its budget in any amount in that respect, and hold the line on expenses for another year as, as a good show of faith to the, to the ratepayer." That was my thought on this. I don't think it's right to raise this budget unless we absolutely had to, when we're jacking up rates left and right because of unfunded EPA mandates. So, that was my methodology with this. I heard Mr. Morosky say he can absorb that cut on the architectural engineering. After hearing what he was saying, I don't know why, maybe we don't just propose, or maybe he would accept cutting that number from three fifty by one hundred and fifty-six, three hundred, to give him the same amount he got this year. Because so far in this fiscal year through the end of May, he's only spent fourteen thousand, five hundred out of a budget of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. He's still got a hundred and eighty thousand left. Now, I gotta be careful here. I, is there going to be some gigantic incur, uh, encumbrance on this account in the next week or two? Or are you gonna really under-run this account?
There are unbilled services that are still in progress. The SSES study is one. Hydraulic model's another. Local limits is another study we're undertaking. These are all engineering services that are part of this account, which are not fully billed out yet.
So, not to put you on the spot, sir, but I mean, if, if you were level funded, is that gonna impact you significantly, if you were level funded? I mean, 'cause I'm, I was proposing that you get reduced down to one fifty-six. Here I am saying, "Why not just make it one ninety-three, seven, level fund you from what you have right now?"
Mr. Funding will match what's needed for fiscal eighteen. It was a tough pill to swallow that we were not able to take advantage of zero percent SRF financing on the SSU project. And the largest single item that's built into this A and E account is for a comprehensive wastewater management plan. That's a prerequisite to being eligible for zero percent SRF financing. Over a twenty-year term for a seventeen million dollar project, you're a lot better and quicker at numbers than I am. That's a very significant cost savings that we missed out on by not being eligible for that. That particular study also comes into play in our negotiations for our intermunicipal agreements with Lunenburg and with Westminster, and also for long-term planning for sewer system needs for the city.
So, for the one ninety-four you got right now, is that for recurring studies or recurring? Or is that just every year, you start off fresh and you've got things that pop up that you use this for, or things that you didn't do that now you gotta do? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
The only, that's an excellent question. The only element that's built into this budget that is commonly recurring is our industrial pretreatment program. And that typically runs on the order of, I don't have the figures, the exact figures, but it's on the order of forty to fifty thousand dollars annual. And that's, that's a year-in, year-out cost. Aside from that specific service need, it's on a case-by-case, year-by-year basis. So, it, it's difficult to say level fund it from one year to the next, when the service needs will vary from one year to the next.
So, I, I'm debating right now whether I should rescind these or not. But, my, my, my point in doing this was because I think for the paltry figure it is in the large scale of things, as a show of good faith to the ratepayer, that we're not increasing our budget at all. I mean, if this were increased by six to seven hundred thousand or a million, I would say, "Okay, there's gotta be really good reasons for that, because those are significant increases." But, a hundred and sixty thousand out of eleven and a half million? We, we couldn't find a way to level fund this year? Just, just one year? That, that, that was my thought process with this. So...
Looking at, looking at...
I guess I'll leave my cuts alone. Let, let the council vote on it and see what they wanna do. But, I, I heard you, Mr. Morosky, and they make sense. I just, it's, it's hard for me to accept an increase in this budget of that size. If it was a lot bigger, I would understand more. But, I feel as if there's a good chance you guys can absorb that one sixty-seven. That's just my opinion based on the, the historical figures. Thank you.
Questions or comments from Counsel Green?
How much of the proposed three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget is gonna be used to cover the A and E for the mandates that are coming before us?
I'm sorry, which mandates are you referring to?
Are the wastewater and stormwater mandates.
Stormwater is MS4, and that's separate from the wastewater budget. They, they don't overlap. There's a, there's a common, if you can indulge me, there is a common misconception that wastewater is stormwater, and that largely has to do with the fact that when we've done sewer separation, you've seen the wastewater department installing new storm drains, new storm drain manholes, storm drain pipes, catch basins. That's only because we were separating what was once a combined sewer into a dedicated sanitary and a dedicated storm. So, that was project-specific. But, we are not a, a combined department of wastewater and stormwater. Stormwater is still currently within the general fund under DPW.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matters before your counselors entertain a motion?
I, I would make a motion to accept all three, all three cuts.
Take one.
Okay, I will, I'll make a motion to accept the cut of forty thousand dollars of sludge disposal.
A motion and second. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor of the proposed cut?
Please.
Five in the affirmative.
Five.
And in, all those opposed, five in the negative. Motion fails.
Move to cut thirty thousand for magnesium hydroxide.
Second.
Chuck.
I have a motion and second. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor? Five in the affirmative. All those opposed, five in the negative. Motion fails.
I would like to make a motion to amend my previous cut, to make it, instead of ninety-seven, three nine eight, to make it one fifty-six, three hundred. Cut it by one fifty-six, three hundred, level fund last year.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend the cut. Counsel, this is your cut, so we can, do we need a motion and second to amend?
No.
Oh, okay. Make a motion to cut architectural engineering by one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Five.
Six, seven?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven to three.
Seven in the affirmative. All those opposed, three in the negative. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Last for us this evening, EPA stormwater contract services on page twenty-five. Original amount, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Proposed reduction of three hundred and forty thousand dollars by Counselor Boishman for a new proposed amount of zero dollars. Laxo and Mr. Erickson, good evening.
Yeah, you should've all received a handout by email, and I think Anna passed it out earlier in the evening. A couple pieces to this. One is just explaining all the different stormwater costs that we have to deal with, with the new EPA stormwater permit, which takes effect on July first of this coming year. It's another very large unfunded mandate. Basically, there's work, we, we're trying to do as much work as possible in-house, which is on that table on the first page. And then, the rest of it is the three hundred and forty thousand dollars that would be contracted out to consulting firms. be contracted out to consulting firms. And the second matter is how to pay for it. There are a few different options and we can talk about those also. But yeah, Nick is our stormwater guru. He put this together with the help of Arcadis and explained this a little more.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, so for table two, you'll see a number of 1 point, roughly 1.3 million there. That's the budget that we would need if we were doing everything in the permit by the book, hiring out a consultant for some things. But what we've done is taken that 1.3 million, whittled down stuff that we can do in-house. We've joined that stormwater coalition to try to save money there. We're going to use interns. We're trying to partner with WPI and other schools to potentially get some free or cheap labor. And with all that, we're able to do all of these things listed in table two within DPW's proposed budget that includes all the other line items that haven't been proposed to be reduced. So what we're actually spending is far less than this 1.3 million and I just want to make the council aware that we're taking significant efforts to cut down the expenses for this permit. The $340,000 represents things that we absolutely don't have the manpower to do in-house, basically. We're going to need to hire the consultant to do all this work. And in order to do that, we need the 340,000. If we don't have this money, then we won't be able to meet the requirements of this permit and we will be fined by the EPA for non-compliance. This is a position that wastewater was in many years ago and look where we are now with the consent decree. We talked about planning ahead. Well, cutting this is taking a step backwards and not planning ahead.
Council Boishman, this is your cut?
Yes, yes, it is my cut. The reason why, I talk to Nick quite a bit. And I made the proposed cut so we can open it up for debate. You know, we added $400,000 to the budget. There was a surplus of almost $5 million in the budget of last year. We got $5 million free cash and I felt that with that $5 million free cash or 4.7 million, we could have taken $340,000 out of that money and paid for this thing. I look at it this way, councilors. You know, we all fight for the American dream. The American dreams, I know I'm going off track a little bit, Councilor Dean Italian, but I just want to tell you, we're penalizing the homeowner.
Try to bring it back to this.
Yeah, we're penalizing the homeowner. We're attacking the homeowner, everything, everything the homeowner's going to pay. I want the utility company, the nonprofits to pay. I want the university to pay. I want the person that rents pay, not just the homeowner, because everybody's going to visit. And I talked to you about this. Everybody's going to be benefit from this. Everybody, not just me, not just the homeowner, Paul Boishman, the Council Donley, or Dean Italian, or you, or you, Amy Green, the whole city's going to benefit. I figured that if the city was really sincere and wanted to change this, they would have been sitting down talking about a plan one, two, or three, which I like three. Mayor, I like three. And I'd like to see it become, I'd like to see it stay in-house. I'd like to see it become an entity of its own where the city can't go in and rob it to pay Peter, that it stays right there so we can fix our catch basins and manhole covers and everything else that we have to. But if we don't talk about it today, next year when it comes around and we got an all-new council, right back in the general funds it goes and they're going to appropriate it down again, 340, maybe a half a million dollars. Well, I don't want, I'm tired of paying as a homeowner. And the people that I represent are tired of paying. They're sick of paying for everything. And they figure that the nonprofits, they figure the university, they figure the people that use the city roads should help pay too. Because we all use the roads, we all should pay. And we should come up with some kind of a plan to help deviate the 340 or 500 or a million dollars a year that it will cost us to do it. And to have an empty DPW fund, keep it in-house, I'm not saying farm it out, I'm not a fan of farming it out. I like to see it in-house, but I also would like to see it where you can't go in and take the money because the mayor says, I need that $7 million. You got surplus to balance my books. No, we don't want that either. But I know my chances of winning 340,000, $340,000 cut are very slim. The mayor smiles, I thought I heard him say tonight, Paul, I came up with the 340 and I agree with you all 100%, but I didn't hear that. But I'm asking for your support. I think, I understand that we could get fine. I'm not trying to go backwards. I'm not trying to put it in the back burner. I believe we should, as I told you earlier and I told you, Lenny, Commissioner, that I agree with this program and I like to see it in front, but I just don't want to keep on putting it in the general fund year after year after year and always say, and we sit here and we smile like we are right now and say, oh, yeah, yeah, well, we'll do it next year. And next year comes, oh, no, we'll do it the following year. And the following year comes, you know, we're going to be right back to the same old game. I want everybody to pay. I believe the people in my ward wants everybody to pay. They're tired of paying, Mayor. They don't want to pay anymore. They don't mind paying their share, but they don't want to pay for the whole thing. That's the issue that we're having. We have to come up with a plan. And if, I'll tell you what I'll do tonight. If you can guarantee me here, the council, that we will have a plan by next budget, I'll rescind this thing. I'll rescind it. The $340,000 cut. If we can come up to say tonight, yeah, we will have a plan by next budget.
Counsel, a plan?
Like plan one, two, or three.
Pay for this, you mean?
Yeah, to pay for this. Because when I sat over there with Council Beazards, there was a young lady over here that gave us, and you were here, Nick, and the young lady said, we can charge the different people. And I'm saying, why aren't we charging? It's just not Council Donley or Council Boishman or Council Beazard, water going into the, running down my driveway and going into the shore catch basins or me cutting the grass. It's everybody. It's the courses, it's the university, it's everybody. And I think we ought to sit down, if we're really serious and we want to save money and help out, then we should come up with a plan like Newton, I believe is Newton, Fall River, Chico P., and those other communities that already implemented it. And everybody pays. Some get it, some pay a quarter. I mean, I'm going to talk, $46 a quarter. Every quarter, they pay $46 and that quarter to help support the MS4. Newton started theirs in 2006, if I recall reading.
Counsel, I hope you're not presenting a rosy picture that no, there's not going to be any pain in this.
No, I'm not trying to, I understand.
No matter what we arrive at, it's going to be a burden on the rate payers.
Right.
No matter what plan we come up with.
Right, I understand that.
We, lack of, lack of a better terminology, we're being, you know, we're being dragged, kicking and screaming through this program, this MS4. So we're hoping, I'm hoping that between now and next budget, that the federal government steps in and says that we're going to either pare the permit down significantly or probably really dreaming here, do away with it altogether. I don't know. But again, I think we're going to have to make, if it remains in effect, we're going to have to make some difficult choices and you all, myself and you as a council, will have to determine what, how, how we're going to pay for it.
And this is why, this is why I asked for the cut, to see where we can head as a council to say, yeah, right, we agreed that we just had a debate on it, we say, yeah, we're going to put it up and have come up with a plan by next year, by next budget. You know, I don't want to keep on paying myself or Council Donley or anybody else and the nonprofits benefit and the university benefits and everybody else benefits, but the only one that pays is you all, right here, or Council Bean.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. We are going to have to put something together, a plan of some sort. I think part of it was that, that was discussed as well, bringing in some of the agencies that don't, that don't pay certain aspects of municipal services. So, yeah, you know, everything's on the table, Counsel. Everything's on the table. Because if none of this changes, we're going to be forced to come up with some kind of a plan. So, yes, I will commit.
You will commit?
I'll commit that we'll, that something's going to change between now and next budget. We're going to have some kind of a program to address MS4.
I want to second Council Boishman's vote to rescind.
What's that? I can't even.
Move the question.
There's no, Council Boishman, if you're rescinding your, your proposed reduction?
I will, since you made that announcement right here tonight.
There is no motion necessary. We have now reached the conclusion of our total reductions.
Just, Mr. Radhar, do you need a?
I'll ask for a five-minute recess before we?
I just wanted to speak on Council Boishman's recommendation. Although I don't agree with making the cut, I do agree with this philosophy that we need to come up with a plan and I hope the mayor is serious about this. You know, it's not going to go away. The federal government's not going to, not going to ease up on it. I think Council Boishman's correct that we need to make, you know, some, take action. Either, I like two or three, I don't like number one on the options, but something has to be put in place, whether it's a, you know, group of, whether it's a public works committee working with the mayor's office to come up with a plan, but something's going to be put in place sooner than later. So I just want to say I agree with Council Boishman on that, that aspect of it.
Council Catty?
I just want to make some clarity about what the Commissioner. Stormwater management isn't under the auspice of wastewater or water. Am I correct saying that? In this unfunded mandate. So I don't know how many councils were on years ago when we created the enterprise funds. But for years, when there was a surplus in water or wastewater, the city took it and put it in the general fund and depleted the fund so badly that when we established the enterprise funds, they almost went under in the first couple of years. So the last thing I would want to do is take money from either enterprise because we have an infrastructure problem in the city. And the money that the water department has in reserve should go towards replacing the pipes in the city that are collapsing and the erosion of our store, of our sewer system. So we shouldn't go back and make the same mistake that councils made 20 and 30 years ago and kept grabbing that money from these enterprises. The city's going to have to find a way to fund this unfunded mandate and leave the two enterprises out of this.
Council Dean Italian?
MS4 requirement, is that, is that an industry-accepted permit where the experts, and I'm not talking the EPA because they're not experts, they're bureaucrats, did they know, is this a necessity? Because when I talk to residents about this, some of them, not most, but some say, well, we got to do it if it's good for the environment. My question has always been, is this permit agreed to in the, in the, in the water community, expert community, that this is a necessity or is this, is this a sweetener to make those eggheads happy?
There is a lot of science backing the, the goals of the permit. There's a lot of components and runoff that are very harmful to streams, rivers, water bodies. So the, the science supports a lot of what they're doing. I think the issue with the permit that we're having is that there's a lot of administrative burden put on us. Obviously, there's contaminants in stormwater. It would be great if we could remove all those contaminants and make this a perfect, perfect world, but we don't have a lot of money and we don't have a lot of money especially to put together all these reports that we have to submit to EPA and do all this other, you know, kind of fluff work that doesn't really seem to actually help the environment. So that's, so the answer to your question is yes and no.
Before we go down this path of, I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to discuss the merits of the permit. I'd just like to restrict this discussion to the contract services.
So if we weren't doing all of that extra stuff, this would be, I heard a comment made that this could be significantly scaled down in the future, hopefully, maybe, who knows? So a lot of this is administrative boondoggle work. So I want it to be understood that I'm not advocating, nor is anybody else, by cutting this, that we don't recognize that there are some environmental benefits to it. Where I have no respect for the EPA is they could give a damn about what position we're in. And that's why if, if there's a way to achieve this end without all that excess stuff that many people agree is onerous and not necessary, and it still achieves the objective, why are they putting us through this? So that's my problem. So the comments made about this cut, he needs to call his Congresswoman and his two senators and talk to them. And I can guarantee you, they don't give a damn about us either. Thank you.
I'll just add, I think, I think we all, you know, agree with the spirit of Council Boishman's proposed cut of, of needing to find a remedy and a long-term, long-term plan for how we fund this moving forward.
And not take the money out of it when we do fund it.
Thank you, Council Boishman. At the end of the day, none of us want to pay for the, you know, want to, to have to pay for this, but it may end up being an inevitability and where the decision's taken out of our hands. At, at present, that decision's already been made. It may be reversed moving forward. I'd like to commend, however, our DPW and, and Nick Erickson for, for his work in whittling this down, you know, looking at initially when the document first came before us, we were looking at that 1.3 number. So to see it come back to, you know, 340,000, I commend you for whittling it down and really looking at what is absolutely essential for us to meet the minimum level requirements for this EPA mandate, particularly as there's some uncertainty at the national level. So I think it's essential to, you know, to go at the minimum necessary so that we're not fined and stay in as much of a holding pattern as we can until we get some long-term direction of where this is going from the federal government. So thank you both for your work and I'm sure there were many others involved in that effort.
One question, Mr. President.
Council Boishman?
When we say minimal, I don't want you to get the wrong idea. I'm kind of, I like, I'm kind of like an environmentalist, but I don't have the big, big words and that, and I like clean things and that. And I like going in with water and not worrying about chemicals in the water or my groundwater and going down to the Nashville River and maybe someday take a fish out of there, who knows? But even if the EPA did turn around and say, we're not, we're going to scrap because of the president, because he doesn't like us, why would you want to not do it? Why would you not want to do it? I understand we don't have money, but why would you want to do? Just like that guy that gave us $50,000 for the, for the woods. Why would you not want to do it if we know what the problems are and correct them now? You know, we won't have to be on any guideline, but if he did came down, why would you just say, well, we don't have to do it, why do it? Why not do it? If we already know it's causing problems, why not? Because it's going to come down the line anyways, maybe the next president will say, hey, you're going to do it. You know, and that's all I'm saying, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
You're in favor of the pair of streets, right?
All right, we, the city auditor needs five minutes for him to, to run the numbers. So I'd ask for a five-minute recess at this time and then we'll, we'll resume and, and take votes on the following orders. I have a motion to recess for five minutes. All those in favor? Opposed, you're recessed. $411 wastewater, 11,455,123 and water, 6,248,821. I have a motion and second to approve 13517. Speaking to the motion, Council Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very concerned about this budget. This budget includes more than 1.1 million in salary increases, more than $205,000 in benefit increases and headcount increased by three and a half. This budget alone is increasing by 5, 5.4 million on top of this year's budget, which increased by 4.2 million from last year's budget. So when you take the increases from this year's budget and next year's budget, we're close to $10 million. That's double the combined of the three years prior. Now, if you have a concern with the tax levy, the pension liability and healthcare costs, this budget is going to exacerbate those problems. I don't blame this mayor. I blame all the mayors for the problems that we're seeing with pension liability, healthcare costs and the tax levy collision that we were told that we'll be seeing in the... and the tax levy collision that we were told that we'll, we'll be seeing in the next few years. But I can tell you, I won't be voting against the budget because I appreciate all the services we get from our city personnel. And also the budget is the mayor's budget. He owns the budget. He runs the city. And by voting against it, I'll be saying that I don't support many of the departments that work hard for the city. But once again, I have a major concern with the budget. And all I'm asking is that we have to be very careful. We can't, right now, we can't manage our pension liability. We can't manage our healthcare costs. But there's one thing that we can possibly manage, which is the tax levy, which is something that I propose with the reductions I made that were turned down. So going forward, I hope that the council, the future councils, take in consideration what I'm saying because you have to look to the future and, um, what we're doing is that we're laying the ground, the problems for the future generations to solve. Thank you.
Council Gina Tally.
The, just to, um, comment on what my colleague to the left just said. I have a strong disagreement with him and others who have said that this is the mayor's budget and he owns it or she owns it. That is true until this council takes a vote. I never understood that argument. Yes, it's his proposal and we're voting on his proposal. But by voting and blessing his proposal or anybody's proposal, it becomes all of ours. I used to hate that with contracts and I hate it with the budgets. To me, it's a cop-up. If you support the mayor's proposal, it is the council and the mayor's budget at that point. Number one, because you can't, it can't come into law without our support. That's number one. Number two, I agree with him about the philosophy of reducing the tax levy. The problem with doing that is if you reduce the tax levy, you have to reduce that levy by that amount in perpetuity. The former assessor, Mr. Caputi, made that clear to us, Mr. Wilson has made that clear to us. If you reduce the tax levy by, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars, you have to sustain that reduction forever. If you don't, and let's say you succeed one year and then the next year it goes up again, two and a half, it's on top of what you cut, so it's a double whammy to the resident the next year if you don't sustain that hundred thousand dollar cut. That is very important to stress to taxpayers. Because some people throw that out there to think that they're getting a win for the residents by saying, look what I saved you on your tax bill. Can you guarantee that's gonna be done 20, 30 years consecutively? You can't. The next council could just vote for the budget as is next year without a tax levy cut. And then whatever the residents got for a little bit of a relief this year, they're gonna get nailed the, the next fiscal year. So that's why I agree with it in philosophy, but in practicality, it's very difficult to implement. As we saw here tonight, if we can't even cut less than a hundred thousand from these budgets, how are you gonna get councils for the next 30 years to cut that amount every single year? So, um, that's number two. Number three, I'm voting against this budget, as I have the last nine, not because I don't support the departments, not because I don't value what they do. I've been in the financial analysis and budgeting industry for 14 years now, all right? This city was managed into the ground until recent years and not only mayors were accountable for that, but councils were too. So when I got on the council in 2008, I got really frustrated every single year after that. And I get more frustrated because I see what's gonna happen. It's on paper and no one's making any efforts to try to correct course or to at least show that they understand that there's a course correction needed. I heard a comment two weeks ago about, well, that's just the way we've done things. That should tell you right there, we shouldn't be doing it. Because we have the fourth worst funded pension system in the state of Massachusetts. And we keep raising taxes to the max because we have no choice but to. When your pension and health insurance costs exceed your new property tax growth and growth in properties, what, what options do we have? For 20 years, we're gonna be saddled with these bills because of our lack of foresight 50, 60 years ago. So that's why I'm always frustrated in these meetings. Because as a financial analyst by trade, we are conditioned to think five, 10 years out, not this year. So all I've asked the city for 10 years is look beyond one year and have some possibilities. What happens if we get into another recession? What if the state of Massachusetts decides they're gonna level fund us next year? Council Tran mentioned that there's an increase in this budget over the last year of 5 million dollars. 85% of that increase is not this administration's fault. 2 million of that increase is net school spending mandated by the state of Massachusetts. 2 million is pension and health insurance, costs accrued decades ago. And then 400,000 dollars is the EPA MS4 mandate. That's four and a half million of the 5 million. We had no control over any of those things. What's done is done. Now, I share his concern about next year and the year after if these increases continue. Luckily, the state of Massachusetts this year helped us with the, the net school spending increase by giving us practically an equal amount of additional Chapter 70 money to fund that increase. But who's to say they'll do that next year? That's my concern every year is I don't like being beholden to the state because they're very unpredictable. They're already talking about how they're gonna be short on revenues this year. Who knows what's gonna happen? So I'm always thinking five or six years ahead because I'm, I'm very nervous. Because when you have an actuary report showing us what our unfunded liabilities are for the next 20 years, you look at the EPA mandates and you look at how erratic the state is in their support of cities and towns, I'm very concerned. But I just want the residents at home to understand, when you talk about new services or added services, forget it. Every dime you pay in extra, this fiscal year coming up is going to fund existing employee debt. It's not going to more services, period. That's why I'm very concerned. And as for the final point on the overlay, I have heard for 10 years, we're gonna address overlay and it never happens. I've heard for 10 years, well, we've just done it that way, so we're gonna continue to do it that way. Once you put something in the general fund, it's very hard to extract it. I find it hard to believe that this administration, like the previous one, can't find 50 grand out of 118 million to show some good faith effort. But evidently, that is too much of a, too big of a pill to swallow for some people. The budget's not in balance and I understand that not voting for these budgets might mean peril for the city from the state's point of view because you might run into a problem. I don't care. I've only been here 10 years. These problems have been prevalent for 40, 50 years. I'm not gonna put my stamp of approval on these things because the way we've been doing things is wrong. So that's why when everybody talks about stabilization, whoop-de-doo, 5 million dollars in stabilization. If the state has another recession, which we know they will, that money's gonna be needed. So we better keep building it up. So I'm a no on this budget and it has nothing to do with the city services. I am extremely concerned for our future generations and future years for our taxpayers, knowing today that the extra they pay today is going to cover existing debt for 20 years from now. That is scary. So I will continue to vote against this until I see some kind of a path forward as to what we're going to do. And I think the city of Pittsburgh, the retirement board, I think we need to start lobbying our legislatures now to extend the date to, from 2040. Because I got news for the city of Pittsburgh, we're not gonna meet 2032, it's not gonna happen. We're not gonna have 28 million dollars in 15 years to put towards this, it's not gonna happen. So we need an extension. We need an extension badly. And maybe the state will throw us that lifeline because the state is in debt hundreds of billions of dollars too. But no one wants to think about it until we get very close to the end, then all panic sets out. So I'm just trying to warn people now, and I've been doing so for 10 years, and I'm very disappointed that there are no cuts. Once again, there's no movement to privatize any services and there's no reductions in personnel anywhere. Nothing. So there are some positives to this budget, but the negatives are, been ingrained in this package for 40 years. And I don't see any movement away from it. Until I do, I'm not voting for these packages. Thank you.
Council Green.
I would just like a clarification on the OPEB account, that that works. We would be in that financial trouble if tomorrow, if every city employee decided to retire. That would be the money that we would owe to them. But when we bring on, it's perpetual with every new employee they, they pay into it. Is that, is that correct? Am I not understanding how that works? Because again, I, we've heard this now since we've sat on council and I, I get concerned, again, because I love math, love to do math, data and everything. So I'm confused on when exactly that money, how that money is to be paid out over a lifetime and how we can never catch up on it if we continue to hire employees that are paying into it.
Council Green, I think within the confines of this meeting, I don't think we'd be able to, to do that. But certainly, uh, we could, we could schedule such a meeting at a later, uh, later time.
Thank you.
Move the question.
I have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion and second to, uh, to approve 13517. Speaking to the motion, Council Gina Tally.
Uh, to answer Council Green's point, the pension system, for your own edification and others, we already know what those costs are gonna be for the next 20 years. We already know what they're gonna be. The actuary's already told us based on who's working now and life expectancy and contributions and investments in the stock market. Because we have a lot of money invested in our system that goes up and down. We use assumed rate of returns. The actuary spits out a report based on information saying, here, Pittsburgh, in order to meet fully funded status on what you owe today by 2032, this is how much you gotta put into the fund every year. So every year, we're gonna have to increase it by over a million bucks a year to make up for the mistakes we've made since 50 years ago. Because when all of these costs were accrued at the start of this whole thing, what cities did, what the mayors and councils did 30, 40 years ago, they said, okay, we know we have to put a million dollars in here, but we don't want to. Because we gotta spend it on other things. So we'll put 200,000 in here and kick the other 800,000 down the road. And as you do this against the wall, it's like saving for retirement. Because we kicked, punted the ball so many years, now we're truncated into the point, we gotta boost up that fund exponentially to make up for lost time. The health insurance is a whole nother animal that should frighten everybody here. But I happen to know on good authority that there are officials in the city who are hoping and praying the federal government moves to single payer. Because if they move to single payer, then it doesn't become Pittsburgh's problem anymore, but it still becomes the taxpayers' problem. It's just a different kind of money. We don't have any idea what OPEB's gonna cost. We have an actuary report saying it's 200, um, we owe 134 million on OPEB right now and 138 on pensions. So right now, we owe today 260 million dollars. And of that number, we have zero put against it, zero. None. And that's the mentality of cities and towns, oh, well, you know, we'll wait and see. So OPEB's even worse, worse. So, um, we have no funding schedule for that. That's just a, say a prayer, whatever the rate's gonna be, here's the amount. We do a pay-as-you-go system for that. We have no idea what it's gonna be. We, we just close our eyes and hope for the best. And as you saw this year, it went up a million bucks, a million bucks. I haven't seen an increase like that in pen, in health insurance in many, many years. I think the increase was 12% and now we got it negotiated down to eight? Eight is gigantic. So I, I know I'm, I sound like a doomsday prophet, but I don't know how much more. I'm doing this for the taxpayers' benefit, not for people in this room, because people in this room, they tune me out right away, okay? Because they're sick of hearing me talk. I'm trying to get the public to understand where their money's going and where it's gonna go for the next 20 years until our legislatures at the state level wake up from their slumber and realize what's going on. Thank you.
A motion and second to approve 13517. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Motion carries nine to one. 13617, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 700,000, seemed to be credited to fiscal year 2018 tax levy charged against overlay surplus.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 13617. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Two in opposition. Motion carries eight to two. Council Beazall and Council Gina Tally. 13717, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 200,620 dollars, seemed to be charged against parking meter garage receipts and credited to fiscal year 2018. Accounts as follows, Treasury Personal Services, 87,620 dollars. Treasury Expenses, 115,000 dollars. 202, sorry, councilors, I apologize, 202,620 dollars.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
Motion and second to adopt 13717. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 13817, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 85,000 dollars, seemed to be charged against PEG access and cable-related fund receipts and credited to fiscal year 2018. Accounts as follows, PEG expenses, 25,000 and PEG capital, 60,000 dollars.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
A motion and second to approve 13817. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 13917, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 15,000 dollars, seemed to be charged against cemetery sale of lots and graves and credited to fiscal year 2018. Accounts as follows, Cemetery Personal Services, 15,000 dollars.
Will the order be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 13917. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 14017, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 6,248,821 dollars, charging Water Enterprise Fund receipts and crediting fiscal year 2018 Water Enterprise Fund accounts as follows. Personal Services, 1,631,200, uh, 321 dollars. Expenses, 1,478,500 dollars. Indirect costs, 720,000 dollars. Debt service, 1,819,000 dollars. Capital expenses, 600,000 dollars.
Will the order be adopted?
Motion and second to adopt 14017. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 14117, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 11,455,123,000 dollars, charging, um, 10,256,100 dollars against Water Enterprise Fund receipts. 1 million, sorry, councilors, 1,199,023 dollars against wastewater. Enterprise retained earn, earnings and crediting fiscal year 2018 wastewater enterprise fund accounts as follows. Personal Services, 2,253,123 dollars. Expenses, 2,977,000. Indirect costs, 950,000. Debt service, 4,525,000. Capital expenses, 750,000. Is that correct?
Will the order be adopted?
Motion and second to adopt 14117. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 14217, ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 683,411 dollars, seemed to be charged against airport receipts reserved and credited to fiscal year 2018. Airport fund accounts as followed, Personal Services, 230,000, 277 dollars. Expenses, 453,134 dollars.
Motion, motion to accept the order.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 14217. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Motion carries nine to one. 11717, petition of Anna M. Farrell, City Clerk, to review the mayor's salary and city council's salary per city code, Chapter 3-43.
Motion to give leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 11717. Speaking to the motion, all, Council Gina Tally.
Just to clarify, Ms. Farrell, is this, is this required by law that you must do? City code every year, every two years?
Uh, in the year of the municipal election.
Okay. Just so we're clear that none of us initiated it and you really didn't either, it's by statute. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 11717. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Councilors, that's, uh, that's all.
Will you adjourn?
Second.
And second to adjourn, councilors, before we adjourn, just one quick, uh, announcement before we then resume, especially in the city council. Pittsburgh Rides will be held on Saturday, June 17th. Joel Caddy, uh, Council Caddy is our contact for that at. Joel Caddy, Councilor Caddy is our contact for that, joelcaddy@gmail.com. Annual Ivor Johnson Bicycle Show, Pittsburgh Historical Society, at 781 Main Street, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's the largest collection of historic Ivor Johnson bicycles ever assembled in one location. Annual Vintage Bicycle Swap Meet at 781 Main Street, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Free, unlimited spaces. Exhibitors sell or swap your bikes, parts, or memorabilia. Drive your vehicle directly to the spot and sell off your trunk and unload. First 25 vendors to register for the swap, swap meet, get a free basket, free breakfast at Historic Morne Square Diner. Kid, Kids Bicycle Rodeo, 780 Main Street, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. A Safety Bike Seminar and Youth Obstacle Course, free helmets to all participants and bike giveaway. Free Bicycle Clinic, also 780 Main, 780 Main Street, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Free service and repair by expert bicycle mechanics. And Ivor Johnson Hill Climb, 1 Ross Street, at 1:00 PM. Flat-out, steep uphill time trial race up the steepest hill in Pittsburgh, when it receives a free night at the Howarth House bed and breakfast. Councilors, before we, before we adjourn, I also just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our finance team, our, our department heads who worked diligently to compile all of these, the budget before you, and the mayor for putting this in front of us, not only in a timely fashion, but also for being so receptive, along with all of you councilors, to a new format for the budget hearings this year. So thank you, thank you to everyone. That said, I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Councilors, we still have a special meeting of the city council to formally adopt the recommendations. It's Tuesday, June 13, 2017. I'd like to call the Pittsburgh City Council Special Meeting to order. Councilor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushner.
Present.
Councilor Levine.
Present.
Councilor Boishman.
Here.
Councilor Beazall.
Present.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deenatally.
Here.
Councilor Donnelly.
Yeah.
Councilor Green. Here. Councilor Joseph. Councilor Caddy. Councilor Tran.
Yeah. Warren, for a special meeting of the city council, a special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council will be held on Tuesday, June 13, 2017, immediately following the council. It's a whole committee meeting just scheduled to begin immediately following the Finance Committee at 6:00 PM. The agenda consisted of orders 13517 up through and including 14217, and petition 11717. The council recommended all orders 135 up to and including 14217 be granted, and petition 11717 be given leave to withdraw.
Will the committee's report be accepted excluding 13517 and 13617?
Second. I have a motion and second to accept 13717 up to and including, to accept the committee's recommendations on 13717 up to and including 11717. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. 13517, mayor's fiscal year 2018 budget, general fund, 118,343, 343,080. Airports, 683,411. Waste water, 11,611,423. Water, 6,248,821.
Will the order be adopted? Recommendation be accepted, rather.
I have a motion and second to the order be adopted, and the recommendation from the council's whole committee meeting be accepted. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Motion carries nine to one. 13617 ordered that there-
Point of clarification?
Point of clar-
Because I wanted to vote against the airport, so I was the second to vote, I guess.
I apologize, Councilor Boishman, that I missed you. Vote was eight to two in opposition. Motion carries. 13617 ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of 700,000, same to be credited to the fiscal year 2018 tax levying charged against overlay surplus.
Motion to adopt 136-17.
I have a motion and second to adopt 13617. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? To an opposition. Motion carries eight to two.
You opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, councilors.